Okay, so I think we'll get started and as people trickle in. Hopefully you can get caught up to speed. I'm gonna review a few things here in the first couple of minutes. And then we'll get to our, our guests, which is a couple of staff members, Jackie Renaud and Katie Ross, who've agreed to join us and just tell us a little bit about some specific things with the upcoming school year. And like I told you before, I, I, I hope that my last couple of weeks have been informative in terms of what I know at this moment. But I know, I know you probably would rather hear from teachers the closer we get because they're the ones that are gonna be there with your kids and working with them all year. So I had, I'm having to twist some arms a little bit, but I'm gonna try to have staff, different staff come in each week. So we can hear different parts about the program this year from them as they dive into things. So look forward to that in just a little bit. So I'm gonna go through just a few things here and last meeting. We did a quick review of the metrics for returning, which again is kind of out of our hands, my hands, and we'll just follow the state numbers on that. And then talked again about Fox Hybrid versus Fox Online. If you need to know more about those, just either look at the old videos or go to the district website, which has a lot of information there. We talked about the hybrid schedule, attendance requirements, and taking care of business day. Today, we'll do just a quick review of the hybrid schedule and attendance, and then we'll get to taking care of business days, which are coming up next week. And then we'll hear from Jackie and Katie. And I only have one major addition to the important dates. And then we'll deal with any questions that we have. So hopefully that's a value to you. So just in review really quick, this is the, this is our hybrid schedule, which this will look very similar, whether it's virtual or in person. And so our plan is that each morning, yeah, each morning, Tuesday through Friday, also Monday too, we're just not quite sure on the time. As that students will have a quick check in with their AG before the day starts. And I think especially in the first couple of weeks, I would say probably the first two to three weeks, that's gonna be really important because there's gonna be a lot of questions about how to navigate Canvas, how to navigate Edgenuity, how exactly it works. And so those connections with AG teacher are gonna be really important. And we're gonna, we're gonna set aside a lot of our normal lessons that we do at the beginning of the year. And really, really focus just on the practical, how do you navigate this situation for students? So hopefully that's a value and, and that'll get them up and get them in a routine. And the plan is that if they're an A cohort student, they will be working on all of their subjects each day, but they're, they're gonna have some sort of, some form of live instruction on Tuesday and Thursday, and B cohort kids will have it on Wednesday and Friday. And the other days, they're just working through their stuff. They're having individual meetings. They're having, maybe having some group projects, but they're doing their independent applied learning, going through the curriculum on their own, and then they have those two live meetings a week. So again, that's the general schedule. And we're really close to having very specific times with those. I just need to run that by a few more of my staff, especially tomorrow and early next week, and then I'll get that final schedule to you. Attendance, I just shortened this up. I think I talked through three or four slides last time. But in general, the most important thing about attendance is that they interact in some way with their class in a 24 hour period. And those interactions can be synchronous or asynchronous. So they could miss if there's a situation or something is going on, they could miss all of their live meetings. But as long as they interact with the class at some point and hopefully go back and watch the recorded video. Then they could be considered present. Cause we wanna get a routine, but we also need, know that we have to be flexible. So as long as they're interacting with every class every day in a 24 hour period, then they're good with attendance. And I just left a few examples there, but about live meetings that, you know, working in a Genuity discussion board in Canvas, email exchanges between a teacher and a student, whatever it is can be considered being present. So next week, we're gonna start taking care of business day. Monday is gonna be sixth grade, Tuesday, seventh grade, and Wednesday, eighth grade. And it's, it's pretty straightforward and pretty simple. There's only three stops. But each one is, is important. The first one being that you returning the paperwork that was sent to you in the mail. If you didn't get that paperwork, please contact the office tomorrow. And you can also just come by and get it because we'll be in the office ready to give you some extra copies. But that's the first, probably the most important stop in terms of going through the rest of the time. So that's where you turn in your stuff. Also, if there's any books or anything that was left over from last year, that's the time to bring it to that spot and turn it in as well. But please just have all that stuff figured out so that you can, you know, go along with the rest of the registration. The second spot, and Jackie will talk about this in just a little bit in more detail, but the second spot is technology. And so Jackie's gonna be over there with all the Chromebooks and you can just pull up there right to the gym doors. And we'll have the Chromebook for you and with some instructions. And also a really important question. If, is if you have any internet connectivity issues and we wanna know that so that we can work with our tech department and you to make sure that you're all dialed in by the time school starts. The third stop, last week, I think I said, we were gonna try to get into a modular, but we've got some work going on with those modulars. So at spot number three, you're gonna pull up there and there's, there's back doors to the gym. And so you'll pull up there, you'll stop. Your student will get out of the car, make sure they have a mask, and then they'll go into the gym. They'll get their picture taken. They're, we're actually gonna print their student body card right there, hand it to them, and then hand them their schedule. And so when they get back in the car, they'll have their student body card, their school picture taken, and they'll have their schedule. And then you just work your way around the modulars and back out to James Street. We're gonna have cones set up and everything. So it shouldn't be too hard to, to know where you're going if you don't have this map with you. And again, I think I mentioned this last time, but if you have two kids and in different grades, it doesn't matter what day you come, come with it, in whatever day is convenient. And also if there's days you can't make it, don't worry about it. Just come on the day that works for you. We wanna be flexible, but it helps us with traffic and, and congestion if we can spread it out by grade. So that's taking care of business day. And Jackie, so Jackie is my media specialist. She runs our library. She does leadership, video tech, computer tech, all of our big events like the Veterans Day Assembly and all those things that some we may or may not be able to do anymore. Jackie's the go to person with that. And so what Jackie's gonna talk about is technology and then also just a little bit about some of those connection things that we or that she runs and, and has leadership be involved with. I think I said this at least last week or the week before that we posted something on Instagram or Facebook every day last spring, just to try to keep that connection with kids and families. So she's gonna share her screen and talk a few things through with you.
Okay, so the first thing is, I'm hoping everyone can hear me. Is on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week, we'll be giving out the Chromebooks with a charger. They have been, many of them have not been charging all summer because of kind of this tech crew had to relabel and upgrade them, everything. So just before you panic, make sure you've plugged them in for about an hour to give them a good charge. And then, and then definitely contact me, preferably before September 11th, so we can troubleshoot any problems that you might be having. You're gonna get a slip of paper inside that Chromebook and it's basically the information you see to your right. And it just talks about email, logging in, connecting to your wifi and all of that. Pretty, pretty much this, pretty much the same as last year. It, the only, the only difference is that it might not come to you fully charged or charged at all. So giving them that good hour beforehand and then trying to connect to your wifi at that point. The other one, now this is, this is me kind of, cause I have two children and my husband works from home. So we have four of us working from home and we really try to disperse because everyone's loud. I mean, I'm probably the loudest, but everybody's loud. So one of the things that I would really recommend, and I, you can see down at the bottom, there's a packet Amazon of wireless, or then excuse me, they're not wireless. They are the headphones with mic and I've got that on me today. This helps kind of block out all the sound around me so that I'm focused. And then high school pharmacy has them too, and they're about eight bucks. So this one looks like Amazon's giving you a pretty good deal too for around $8 as well. So I would highly recommend ordering those and getting them there. It'll help, for me, it helps me focus, but then also the sound is right here. So it's not gonna pick up too much of the other sound around you. Purchase a mouse if you can. And then I know we all have different sized homes, but setting up a location in your home, just a card table that you can flip up, have everyone parked there during their, their, either their work time or when they're doing their Google meets is really good. And I was even thinking getting up like a red solo cup and put it in that red solo cup someplace on the table, letting, letting them know that, you know, they're on. They're, they're in the middle of a lesson so that maybe you don't distract them as well, or they don't distract you. I know that's, my kids come in and they're looking at me waving. And I'm just like trying not to, but if I just had a sign up, which I probably will from here on out, just letting them know this is not a good time. So whether the cups up or cups down, something like that, something really easy so that you know, and the kid actually takes it like this is my job. I'm, I'm learning and I'm focused. And so those are just a few tips I would recommend. Falcon gear, I'm working with Tennyson Carlo at, I think it's Silver Screens now. Great. He's, he set up an online store. You've got t-shirts, sweatshirts, caps and hats. And so that is up and ready. And I think it'll stay up till about September 24th or 25th. And really welcome you guys to order some of the gear. We also send it home in the paperwork. So if you wanted to bring cash or check with you on one of those, those days for getting back to business, you're, we're welcome to do that as well and we'll get those orders for you. Now how they come to you, that's kind of up in the air. I'm kind of envisioning we get the orders in October and maybe AG teachers go and deliver them to the kids who ordered, or we'll have a pickup time at Silverton Middle School for that to happen as well. We'll kind of play that by ear to see what kind of ordering we have. Other thing is, this is our Facebook, is SMS Falcons. And then Silverton Falcons. And you can see on the Instagram, we have a lot of followers. Some of them are parents, but a lot of them are kids. And so that is one of the, the things we try to do some fun stuff over the course of the week. So kids can somewhat stay engaged and feel that sense of community. And we had that leaving, this is gonna be interesting with our sixth graders. So a true virtual school for them this year from the start. So this will be a little bit different, but this is great communication and a great way for even the kids to reach out to me, cause that's who I am. I'm, I head up the Silverton Falcons on Instagram. So sometimes they'll, they will ask me a question and I will directly be able to respond back to them through that media. And then the SMS Falcons, that one's a great one. It's Facebook. It's more for us older, more mature people. But in the Facebook one, I can post longer videos. And so you'll see longer videos posted there. And so we'll, we'll kind of play around with that and really part of being a community to me is hearing ideas, cause I'm not the only one with ideas. My students really brought some fun ideas and I know you guys equally have great ideas. So if you find something on TikTok or just anything to get us involved, if, if you and your child, maybe that you guys have something fun that you wanted to share and just to kind of open your home to us and let us get to know you and vice versa with us, but somehow kind of creating that community that we're gonna, we're gonna lose a little bit at the beginning here and hopefully we can, we can share that back with, with each other. I think, I think that is it.
Jackie, I'm gonna, I'm gonna break my rule and ask you a question.
Okay, okay, I'm ready.
So there's a question that, will the Chromebooks accommodate a wireless mouse? Or should we get a wired one? And if so, is there only one kind of plugin?
There is a USB plugin for, which is, which is basically this little guy here. And so it's kind of the old school mouse. The mice, I believe it will accommodate a wireless mouse. I don't, I wouldn't see why it wouldn't, but I'm not positive. Cause I, I'm old school. I kind of like the cords, although it keeps me attached to the machine. And with the cords, I feel like nothing's gonna fail. The battery's not gonna die or anything like that. That's, that's why I like this baby too. It's just everything is, is hooked. So if you can get a USB mouse, I know that for sure works. A wireless one, I do not know. I know they have kind of that USB port that you can pop it right in. There shouldn't be any reason for it not to work. So if you have one already, I'd say, you know, go for it. It's, it's nice that we're giving it to you early. So you can do a lot of troubleshooting prior to. And then you could also contact me and I'll help as much as I can figure out what might be the problem so that we can be up and ready way before September 14th. So that's, that's kind of a nice. I don't, I don't know any other school at this point that's giving them out this early. So they'll have enough time to really get used to them. And especially with their schedules also being given to them on Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, it might be a great opportunity to shoot an email out to your AG teacher and introduce yourself. I'm sure they will be doing that as well with you, but it might be kind of a nice mature way of extending out that, hey, I'm sixth grade now or seventh or eighth and, and introduce yourself to your teacher.
Yeah, no, that's good. So, okay, I think that's good, Jackie. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna stop sharing. Let's see, how do I do that? Okay, there we go.
You got it? Okay. Now I'm gonna go back to sharing mine. See how smooth we can be. Does it look good?
Yep.
Okay. And those two, once, now that we're back, back in it, we, I tried to double up in my communication and do parent square, but then also do Facebook stuff. When we're in person, I like to just post a lot of fun stuff that's happening in the school. That'll be a little different now, but we'll, we'll do what we can to keep some interesting stuff out there. So next up is Katie Ross. So Katie Ross has been a teacher at the middle school for a few years and she has been doing English Language Arts. She's gonna be doing math now. And she has been diving into Canvas. So remember the main things that we're gonna be dealing with, students are gonna be navigating is Canvas is the learning platform. So just think Google Classroom, except it's more made, it's made more for education. So Canvas is the platform. Canvas will be the go to place when your students log on and first thing. And then Edgenuity is the curriculum that is attached to that. And so as, as a parent, you'll be able to see progress kind of in real time in Edgenuity. But then in Canvas, that's where you can see sort of the overall picture, the plan, the schedule and all that. So Katie is gonna dive into some of these, some of the most important things and just give you an idea of what it looks like. And then the district is making videos and we're gonna send those things out to you also once we get closer to the year. But I just wanted you to have a sense of what, what it was gonna look like. So Katie, are you there?
I'm here.
You're here.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I, we were just saying how nervous we were to do this, which is funny, cause we're used to talking in front of everybody, but for some reason not seeing anyone's face is a little bit alarming. So if I, if I get really loud, that's out of my character. So I'll try to keep it down, try to keep it down tonight. Okay, so the most important thing in Canvas, I was looking at this both from a teacher standpoint and from a parent standpoint. In the spring, things were kind of all over the place. And so the nice thing about Canvas is that you will have this dashboard. And this is where you will see all of your child's classes. Also, on each one of those classes, you'll see little symbols at the bottom. If a teacher posts an announcement or a new assignment, or there's a new discussion, you'll see little colored symbols down there that will kind of alert you. Maybe you didn't see it the day before you signed on. There's something red tagged down there. It'll catch your eye and make you go into that course, open it up and see what new things were posted. So it's really nice at a glance to see basically the overall layout of what's going on. On the far right side, it'll say coming up. And this is a really awesome way for your student to see what lessons and things are due, maybe even a quiz that's coming up. In the springtime, we had some trouble helping kids virtually organize their assignments and what tasks to do first. And this does that for you. So it'll put it all on the side, I believe, in order of when things are due. So your child, even you can go look on there and say, okay, let's knock this assignment out first. It's at the top of the list and then we'll work through these things. You'll also see up there, it says view calendar. So if you click on that, it takes you to this beautiful calendar where it will color code different assignments, different appointments that you have with your child's classes. So you can see on there, it says there's a meeting on one day, there's a discussion on another day, an assignment on another day, and it color codes it with what class. Also, as we get further into it, you can set up appointments with your child's teacher, specific slots, and those will also light up on this calendar. So these are just different ways to see kind of what's coming ahead. So there are no surprises. We don't like those really as parents and the kids didn't like them either. So it'll all be right here for you to look at. And then Canvas sets up classrooms. They have different, they call them modules. So it's basically like if we have units or different projects, it organizes them into nice little tidy areas. And so it's an easy way for you to go through and look and see what's coming up ahead. And what's really cool about this is that you can lock, the teachers can lock certain assignments. So your child can't get into it until they have finished other assignments before then. So let's say your kid wants to go do that lesson three, but they haven't done one and two yet. It won't let them into lesson three until they have finished one and two, which is really nice again for that organization piece. Also, what I really like, in my past life, I was a K1 teacher, so I really liked symbols and color coding and things. If you see to the left of these modules, there are little symbols there. Each one of those symbols means something different. So one would mean an assignment. One would mean a quiz. One would mean a discussion. And so your child can look at that and see what's coming up ahead. There are no surprises. So there's that. And then if you click on one of those assignments, this is what it will look like. Everybody can do them differently. This is just a little practice one. You'll notice Mr. Davidson did not say I was a tech teacher. And you can kind of see why this is very plain and boring, but I'm gonna get really awesome at this by 2021. So it'll have the lesson at the top and then there will be a section where the lesson is. So your teacher may post a video. They might write, have an explanation on there. They might create their own video and that will all be in this space. It'll say at the bottom, the due date, when it's available and when you have to turn it in. And then there's also spots for rubrics. So again, no surprises on what your teacher is grading the assignment on. If you see that rubric at the bottom, it'll just state what they're looking for. And it's also a good way for your child to read through and see, okay, how do I get the full points or what do I need to do so I can get this grade on this assignment? That's all in this one nice little space here. And then they have another feature discussions. So this is a great way for, I was thinking from an AG teacher to open discussions within your class. Students can talk to one another, collaborate with each other. When you click on that example, it says, how was your week? Your child can click on there and then they can start typing a response and students can reply to them. A cool feature with that on the next slide is it will say, you can kind of see a rope back and forth to myself. You can also include video or audio. So if a child is uncomfortable maybe with texts or typing, they're not sure what they want to say or whatnot. Or you have a student that really wants to record themselves and give their little discussion via video or audio, there are those features to do that. Now, um, we are still learning how to do those things, but I know they're available on there. So that's kind of just the gist. And then also in each classroom, there's ways to contact the teacher that are, that's really easy. When you move to the middle school, those of you that are middle school pros, you already know about juggling different teachers. But when you are coming up, so as sixth graders, each one of those classes are set up so that you can click on a teacher email. Some of us have Google voicemail or whatever it's called. I'm not really, don't really know the exact term for that. So you can text or call, all the contact information is right there in one easy click. You don't have to go hunting through district pages and that sort of thing, if you're already on this Canvas setting. So there's a lot, a lot, a lot on there that we're still learning about, but there are a few really great things that I think parents will be excited about moving forward this next school year.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
So I don't know who I'm gonna talk into for next week. But so next week, I wanna try to have somebody come talk about Edgenuity and maybe add a little bit more to the Canvas discussion. But because again, the Edgenuity and Canvas are gonna be the biggest components to, to this year and they're gonna be new. We'll still use Google meets as our live platform, but people are generally used to that. And so that's not gonna be as big of a learning curve. But with Canvas and Edgenuity, we got, it's, it's just gonna be some bumps in the road as we get started. And next week, when teachers come back, there's gonna be a lot of training and a lot of diving in and a lot of setting up stuff for the next two weeks. It's gonna be pretty fast and pretty intense so that we can be ready for kids on the 14th. And of course, there's lots of teachers who have been getting into as much as they can and actually wanting more. It's, you know, sooner than next week. So I really appreciate Katie and Jackie diving into different things and putting in a lot of extra time and being able to bring those things to you. So the last couple of things I've got and then we'll, and then we'll probably be done for tonight is, these dates are the same, except for again, just a reminder about Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week for taking care of business day. And those are really important to get kind of the essential things that you need to start the year. One of the questions that was good, and I typed the answer, I was trying to type and, and do the slide. So hopefully I did okay there, was about, is the picture for just the ID or is it, or is it picture day? And because we're in a virtual setting, this is picture day. So if you want to, I mean, if they wanna dress up and, and look nice for picture day, this is the time to do it. Just because we don't, we wanna try to get that stuff done right away. And so just if, if that's something that you wanna talk to your student about, make sure they know that, that it's, it's not just for the student ID. It's for the actual picture day. The new one on there, and I say tentative, just because I'm not 100%, but I'm pretty close. He has, we wanna, we wanna make sure that we do an open house, but we wanna do it before we start. Because we wanna give you another glimpse of what each one of your classes is gonna look like from the teachers. And so what we're shooting for is that Thursday before school starts on September 10th, that evening, is to somehow do a virtual open house. And have you have the opportunity to go into your students' classroom with their teacher virtually and work through their schedule so that you can meet the teacher, see what the expectations are, and just have a general sense of what they're gonna be doing for that time. And so I would just put that in your calendar, maybe in pencil, if you still write in a physical calendar. But that's probably gonna be the date. I just need to verify with a few other people that that'll work. But that hopefully will be our virtual open house. And then again, just remember that if you still need to make the decision to go Fox Online, we really, really need to know that right away. And then October 5th will be the day that we decide what we're gonna do with the second nine weeks. And the, the shift in schedule will happen on November 13th to 16th. And so those are kind of big days that are coming up. So one of the questions, last couple of questions, well, somebody just said, doing great. We appreciate you doing this. And I think that's especially for Katie and Jackie. So thank you for doing that. I answered the Chromebook question. The, there was a question about using Canvas for the live instruction versus Google Meet. That could be something down the road. But right now with how many things are having to be integrated and all the data and all the merging of the systems and talking to each other between Edgenuity, Canvas, and all the merging of the systems and talking to each other between edgenuity, Canvas, our web sis, our Silk scheduler, all of that on the backend has been, our tech department has been going round the clock to try to make that happen. So that's a we have some continuity with what we're doing, but that could happen. And will there be picture packets? I believe, I believe those came in the parent square communication. But if you did not get that attachment, I think I attached it today and also Monday. If you didn't get that, just email Jennifer Wooler Shine and she, or call the office tomorrow and we'll get you that. We'll get you that right away. So, so that's all the questions. The only other thing I was going to say was I got an update today about the meal plan. I don't know if this is applicable to everyone or not, but food, with food services, they are going to have pickup sites at every school in town except for the middle school. And this was more of a kind of an efficiency thing and a staffing thing. And so if you have a student that needs a meal pickup, they can go to any in-town school except for the middle school, which is odd. But it's like you can go to the high school, Mark Twain or Robert Frost to get meal pickups. And summer meals will continue to be available through September 4th. There won't be any meals available September 7th to 11th because food service just has to kind of switch things over and prepare for the next year. But then after that, the meal pickups will happen at all the schools. So you can get those at any school. There's a question about Fox Online. They will use Canvas and edgenuity as well. Yep, they will be closely aligned with what we're doing. So, okay. Well, thank you for coming. And again, everything is a draft at this point, but we're getting closer and closer each week as things are kind of coming together. Staff's going to come back next week and so things are really going to get going. And by next Thursday, hopefully I'll have a lot more specific information. And then the Thursday after that won't be this format, but will be hopefully our open house as we get closer and closer to the school year. So really appreciate you coming out and asking good questions. And thank you again to Katie and Jackie, and we will see you next week.